And the elementary school, two hundred and fifty thousand for a total of three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
Take a motion to adjourn the manifest?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, public comment.
Gina Potts is on the agenda. What I'd like to say is that, uh, I can't now. And I'd like to select to approve it, so that we certainly have, uh, the floor.
Let's just look at it anyway. Maybe he figured this was.
And it's an anticipation of the public hearing. Yes, copies. But also?
I think so.
Okay, so, in regards to a public hearing, um, on recommendation from the town attorney, the Conservation Commission actually has to hold the public hearing, not the Select Board. So, I think at your next mea- at our next meeting, um, that I'm sure can be set up, um, for a date, you know, whenever, whatever you want for a date. Good.
February first?
I don't know. That, that's gonna be for the commission to decide.
Decide that February first, and you have to have at least ten days and there's a little bit of a calendar to make sure that you have enough notice.
If it, if, if at the February first meeting, you have to have so many days' notice for a hearing, and then, depending on what's on the calendar, so that, that can be worked out. So I guess we don't have to worry about that. Old business. Any other, yes?
So, I wanted to talk about the possibility of a warrant article to help keep the warrant article for the Conservation Commission. And, um, because we are starting putting forth a warrant article per the attorney for the Davis Pond property to be accepted by the town, I went and looked at a lot of our current conservation properties, and they were not accepted at a town meeting to be conservation lands. And I was wondering if we, if the selectmen, if the Conservation Commission, when they meet on February first, accept, um, to see if the town will vote to officially accept the nineteen Madison Conservation Commission-stewarded properties, and they would be listed, we have nineteen on the website, in accordance with RSA thirty-six A, to formally and publicly designate these properties as conservation lands in perpetuity. They don't, two of the lands do have easements on them, so actually it's seventeen, but it would be a housekeeping warrant article to have officially have the town legislative body accept the ones we've been managing all this time, many years, as conservation lands, really approved. And it might be that somewhere in a warrant article in years past, one of them was accepted, but this way we would have all of them officially accepted, similar to what we will be doing for the Davis, the East Davis Pond property, uh, in a warrant article, moving it from town-managed to Conservation Commission-managed, if the town accepts that.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I didn't know if we needed to petition this, or if this is something that the selectmen feel would be accepted if the Madison Conservation Commission were to put this warrant article before you, uh, which wouldn't be until after their meeting on February first, so we're getting right up to your deadline for submitted warrant articles.
What's the code? February?
Sixth.
Sixth.
Is when the petition has to be done, and that's your next meeting, and then the, um, uh, budget hearing is the eighth, and then you guys sign the warrant after that.
So we got time to get it in?
And we'll, we'll speak to the town attorney also, just to make sure that, I, I don't know how all these properties were obtained. I don't know if it's gonna have to be a property by property, or, I don't, I don't know if there can be a blanket warrant article to say, "Accept seventeen properties" without, you know, some, like you say, two of them have, two of the nineteen have easements.
Right.
So.
The other seventeen, not. And one of the articles that I read from the New Hampshire Conservation Fund is that towns, um, uh, they, you can either put an easement on the property to make sure that it's a conservation land, or the town legislative body can so vote.
Okay.
And, um, so my, I guess my question is, I guess, should we pursue having it petitioned so that we can get it on, on the warrant, even if it gets looked at and wording gets revised by the attorney? I mean, I guess the attorney could turn this down.
Attorney wouldn't review it. We'd have to put whatever was given to us on the warrant that way, if it's petitioned from the citizens.
We can't change wording of a petition warrant article once everybody has signed it and presented it.
These properties aren't in any danger. Is there any reason we can't take the time and put it on next year's warrant? That way it's done properly? I'm not, I'm not against doing it, I'm just, just the way it's done, the right way. If all these properties need to be separated into their own warrant, why not wait until next year's warrant? They're not in any danger of going anywhere.
Yeah, I, I think we could possibly do that.
I think it would just make more sense, given the timeframe.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. Yes.
Hi, Joy Gray. Um, Selectman Aru, you have said recently that you are retiring, and that you've been doing this for twenty-three years, but not so much longer. So I was wondering, um, when you were planning on retiring?
That's my business.
Okay, I'll be more specific. Are you planning on retiring during an election cycle so that the taxpayers elect your replacement, or off-cycle?
I'm not sure yet.
Selectmen would appoint your replacement?
Not sure yet.
Okay, I guess, as a member of the public, I respectfully request that it be during an election cycle so that the public can elect your replacement, as opposed to the slug.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah, I guess so. Dean Stier, Comedy Daily Sun. Um, I've spoken to the chief about this already, and, uh, I've seen, you know, the Budget Committee meetings, um, about, um, allegations of, or, um, concepts of, you know, the, um, employees in the Budget Committee not getting along, and I was wondering if the Morris Selectmen had an opinion on, on that issue.
John?
I don't.
It's probably not something that will be through public comment. I'm, I'm sure we can put it on, on an agenda if we're going to go back and forth, because public comment is normally just public comment, without, without answers, but it's certainly something that can be put on for our next meeting's agenda.
I don't know that speaking, speaking to an employee's state or conflict in a public setting is appropriate either way.
True. Yeah, we're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be able to go by names. It'd have to be non-public unless that employee asked for it not to be non-public. Okay?
So it'd be the non-public agenda?
Yes. Wait. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll move to discussion items and new business. Mr. McKenna, Mr. Birelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Sure. Oh, hold on. Can you grab the mic?
Sure. Mind if I just?
Yeah, he's bringing you the mic.
I'm only a couple of feet away. I can't hear a word anyway, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. As you're aware, on January ninth, two thousand twenty-two, case number twenty-three-ten Barton Place was denied his second appeal to the ZBA. Your Select Board now have our confirmation regarding the first phase that NESTR established after March of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, our illegal business operations in several districts. Besides this confirmation of the first phase, if there were any confusion as to whether the charge-by-night rental motel is in fact a public lodging business of the sort are prohibited in Madison residential zones, Mr. Johnson has expressly argued on behalf of property owners who have offered short-term rentals in Madison that they do so in competition with hotels, motels, bed-and-breakfast operations in the tourist industry. His statement only strengthens the town argument that short-term rentals are not allowed. It's time to complete Phase One. You have a list of STR owners who are illegally operating their businesses in Madison. Over the past year, we have kindly asked many times and have experienced delays, but now there's absolutely no reason to delay sending C and D letters. So I ask you, when are you sending the necessary letters, including the C and D letters, and in particular, Ten Barton Place?
Okay, you mentioned, Ten Barton Place was denied its second appeal on January ninth of two thousand twenty-two?
Um, twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, okay.
Twenty-three, sorry, I apologize.
No, no, I was, because.
Twenty-four.
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 Twenty-four. I apologize.
Okay, I was unaware that anybody had their second, well, they still have an appeal, correct?
No. He's done.
They asked for the ZBA to rehear their case, and the ZBA denied a rehearing.
Okay. So that is one that we can send to the attorney and?
Well, he still has thirty days to appeal that decision.
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
All right. But, um, in all honesty, you had already given him two, correct? Two letters?
Yes.
And after the second letter, they would automatically get a C and D letter?
There's too much confusion here. The C and D letter is what he got, and that is what he appealed to the ZBA.
All right, so, that's in, 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 um, that's being, um, so then it's, it's his, uh?
The notice of violation is what he appealed.
I'm pretty sure he's still renting. And I don't know, because, you know, they're doing what they all do, the responsible rental resource group. They don't follow.
The last meeting we had with you guys, I brought that forward, and I asked you guys if it was denied, if you were gonna do something about it.
Okay.
Good call.
Go ahead.
And you said you would address it.
Correct.
So we're here wondering if you're gonna do something about it.
Only that they, they're still within their thirty-day grace period for an appeal of their denial, of their second denial. Um, so, we, we're hoping to get one to the attorney so it can go to court, because if we add, right now we have thirteen, thirteen cases that the ZBA has continued, correct?
Correct.
And we are awaiting a decision on any of those cases, so that the attorney can then go forward. The attorney, in order for us to get the fines, the attorney's gonna have to file with the court.
We're not trying to, we're just trying to get things.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand.
You know, frustrated, and I'm sure you guys are. I'm sure you're totally frustrated with this.
Well, I'm just, because every day there's another ruling with somebody's town, and it muddies the water a little bit, but it doesn't change our position.
In all honesty, I'm not, again, that being in the business for as long as I was, having to deal with these, you know, Madison has some of the strongest ordinances.
Correct.
In the valley. It could really, this town could really be the place that children and families, and it can have a real old-fashioned town.
Right.
You know, and not have all these businesses all over the place.
Correct.
And on top of that, here we have Matt Johnson, who is representing the Mount Washington Renters Association, and he's admitting that they're businesses by stating and arguing that they should be able to do it as a, as a business.
From?
So. And I can give you his, his, uh, this is his word.
No, I understand, I understand.
So, where we are right now is, he's in, he's in the appeal window at this point?
He's exhausted the appeal.
He's exhausted, right.
Okay?
Okay, so.
He has thirty days from January ninth to still appeal that decision.
He has thirty days from January ninth, at which point?
No, he had it the fifteenth already. He had the second appeal on the fifteenth, I believe.
I don't think the ZBA.
Is there a way that you can check with the chair?
Of the ZBA.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And find out about this?
Yep. And if that is the case, I will direct the town attorney to move forward on that case.
Thank you. That is basically what we're looking for.
No, and I understand. I understand your frustration, too. I really do.
No, and we understand, you have a lot on your plate.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's not the only thing going, but you know, it.
I will ask the chair, and if in fact, uh, that appeal, or, or he's used up all of his time and his appeals, then I would, then the board will direct, not myself.
I believe he has.
Okay, we will check, we will find that out, and?
And, uh, you know, again.
There will be an answer.
Okay?
Yes, sir. I understand. Go ahead, Paul.
Good evening.
Good.
I'd like to take the time to thank the Select Board for scheduling us on tonight's agenda, and speak about arguably one of the most important issues facing the town of Madison, STRs. I have two related items to discuss.
Okay.
One, in January of two thousand twenty-three, the town had at least fifty properties that were identified as STRs with the recent change in ownership. Thirteen have filed for a ZBA appeal after receiving their cease and desist letters. Thank you, that was a huge step. One should be sent to Attorney Johnson, as the C and D was sent out on eight sixteen twenty-three. Nine have stated that they were either no longer renting long, or long-term, or have sold. Twelve have responded to the town's first letter with various comments of documentation. Decision proof lies with the ZBA. Fifteen, still no action. The chair exclaimed, "Let's get this done." We've been told breaking this issue into two parts made it easier to handle. A decision on the second part would come later. I am now going to give the selectmen a list of eleven new STRs to add to Part One.
Now, when you say eleven new, Paul, eleven since the town meeting? Okay.
Yeah, that you are unaware of.
Okay.
This could have all been given to you ahead of time.
There you go.
Oh. Oh. Has your glasses?
In reviewing this spreadsheet used to track these properties, it has become stagnant. It needs to move forward. We were told there would be thirty-day intervals for each step. We have brought that to your attention many times, and properties overdue by sixty days or more with no response from the town. We were told these issues would be addressed over three months ago. They still lie in limbo. It's quite obvious that this issue is not getting the attention it needs. More than two years ago, the town hired a new attorney who is the expert on the issue of STRs. Why has the town not followed council's direction and followed up on the fines? Anybody can to answer?
Nope.
I'd like to know.
As far as I know, we have followed the attorney's suggestion.
You have, Paul, you have thirteen notices of violation sitting with the ZBA.
Correct.
One of which has been dealt with, if my numbers are correct.
Correct.
What are we gonna do if we pile on fifteen more? They're going to get continued, just like the ones that are sitting there right now. The, the path lies with the ZBA in this case that we just spoke of a minute, a minute ago with Nick. We're going to need to set a precedent with that case, and then wait to see what the ZBA does with the other twelve cases that are sitting there. Otherwise, sending cease and desist letters does no good, because they're gonna sit in limbo with the ZBA, or sit in limbo with us. It makes no difference where they sit.
I disagree, and I'll tell you why. Because you're gonna get backed up with them, that's one thing.
We already are.
Another thing is, your original plan that you told us about was to do this in an expedient manner, get it done.
And as expedient as government goes.
I'm talking about the, please, I'm talking about the original fifty. You were gonna get that done, and when we ask you questions about it, we get vague answers, and we, we get, "We'll address it," and it doesn't happen. And then you took us off, you took us off the old business, so now a dialogue is very hard. I'd like to continue, if you don't mind.
Okay. Try to.
There have been files created by the administrators for each of the post-twenty-two properties, and the next steps can go forward, cannot go forward without the selecting. And two, this is something entirely new. The property at three Upper Lakeview Drive was recently sold to a Realtor from Rhode Island, who is going to use it as an STR. I have included in my package a letter from the prior owner that did not wrench from twenty, from two thousand two to two thousand fourteen. This is clearly an abandonment of non-conforming use. I am now asking the Select Board to develop, through council, a process to deal with problematic properties that disrupt our neighborhood and quality of life, specifically those that have clearly not been used as a rental consistently from nineteen ninety-nine, when Idol Weiss was included in Madison. So, excuse me, nineteen ninety. I'd like to give you that package right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm wondering, can we get back into the old business?
Well, we will carry it over to the next meeting, certainly, because I do have answers that I have to give you. So at the next, for the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda.
Thank you.
And then we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you. This has been over two years.
What, what is it?
Just.
That's pretty much what I said, but that's, you know, that's, that's him. That's his argument.
Okay. All right, Joe. No, you think he's, I think he's, that's okay. All righty, and we'll move on to old business, which is building code ordinance update review. How are we doing?
I didn't make any changes, because we didn't.
Right.
Um, plan on anything particular.
I think we, I thought we pretty much.
I asked for time to look at it.
Sure.
And I, I want your opinion.
Okay, go ahead. I know we were stumbling on that three thousand, one thousand.
That's, I'd like to consider removing the substantial improvement from the building ordinance.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're always talking about how Bob is overwhelmed.
Mm-hmm.
And we're increasing taxes. That part of the permit ordinance is strictly for residing, or redecking, or things of that nature, things that don't create a structural change. And it wouldn't eliminate the need for a permit for mechanical, based on the way this was written, so you'd still need a permit for electrical or plumbing and things that are a safety issue.
Mm-hmm.
I think it just makes sense to me to remove that.
You want to remove all of Section D?
All of Section D, and, and have this ordinance in place strictly for new construction, or construction outside of what was existing, additions and things of that nature, which it would still pertain to if you removed Section D.
First, I was, yeah, first, when the first application was, I'm sorry. I don't have an issue with it. I'd just like to make sure that Bob, that there's nothing that would fall through the cracks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna be the only one to read it and make sure that that.
Yeah.
The intent is there, but.
We can certainly look at it with Bob.
What would be your recommendation for wording? We had any wording? None at all?
Well, this is just the definition section, so you could remove Def- Definition D to substantial improvement, and all you would have to do is remove substantial improvement from Article Three. And it would be construction or mechanical installation. You may need the word erect in here in the first sentence somewhere to make sure that it's worded properly, but.
All right, Paul.
I think that Bob should take it out before we do anything.
We'll, we'll talk to Bob and move it to the next meeting. Sound good?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's Bob tomorrow.
As I say, do we have time?
Oh, is this going?
This is, well, um, it's on your warrant, but the warrant is very blanket. It doesn't say anything specific, it's just updates to this. So I think your warrant article can still go through, and this?
We can make sure that this is correct before we put it out.
Before town meeting, we need to post it and that kind of thing with the changes prior to town meeting, but we still have a little bit of time to work on it, I think.
We'll talk to him tomorrow.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, no problem. Here you go. Twenty-twenty, I wanna read the budget one more time.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Proposed operating budget.
I don't believe there's been anything that's changed since your last.
No, I'm sure none of this will remain the same. Uh, the two thousand twenty-three budget was three million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The proposed budget is three million, four hundred and twenty thousand and eighty-eight dollars, for a three-point-eight percent increase. There was nothing substantial.
How were you able to get numbers on, they called in the trash? I'm not saving this much, but.
Yeah, we are, we are still saving, we're saving money, uh, at least a hundred dollars a trip.
Okay.
Um, I haven't had a chance to talk to Dave, it was a little snowy last week, and he's been kinda tied up following, following.
Okay.
I just wanted to look at, uh, the, under, where are we? Under our fuel line? Try to find it again.
General Government Buildings, what you mean, that one?
Yeah.
There's a hundred thousand dollars proposed. Page nine.
Uh, we returned eighteen thousand, three forty-two out of a hundred thousand dollar budget. I think fuel, did, is this number derived from present-day fuel costs, or was that just brought forward from last year?
It's brought forward.
Uh, we might be able to find ten thousand there. The impressive fuel has come down dramatically in the last, I mean, I wouldn't go nuts with it, but, uh.
Still be.
What do you think?
It'd still be a little over what we spent last year if you took ten off it, and should be.
And, and the price is out dropping.
Yeah, I guess that.
So what do you want, you wanna cut that?
Sure.
Five or ten, or what do we feel?
Cut it to ninety?
I'd cut it to. I mean, I wouldn't go nuts with it, but, uh.
Still be.
What do you think?
You'd still be a little over what we spent last year if you took 10 off it, and should be.
And the price is out dropping. So what do you want? You want to cut that?
Sure.
Five or 10, or what do we feel?
Cut it to 90.
I'd cut it to 90. That was the only thing that I could find. I went through this probably a dozen times today, and I don't think that, that increase is palatable. I, I don't, I don't like to see anything much over 2%, with 3.8% in the current climate.
Well, but also, John, if you look at what we cut out of last year's budget, it's not as high.
Yeah. Under the warrant article summary, uh, we're waiting on numbers on that DPW truck for waste, uh, waste control. We just need some numbers to back up our description. There will be no, uh.
There'll be no cost.
No, yeah, no impact for us here.
Sorry, which article are we talking about?
The waste truck, E, which will change to something else.
Yeah, he'll get a number.
We just need to get the numbers tied down.
And still nothing from waste stations?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry if.
From what?
They have till the 6th of February.
Okay, but, and I've always asked, and ABC has always just said, well, they're all supposed to file, uh, financials. And I know in the last couple of years, there've been some that, most of them do, most of the big ones that we've been dealing with for a long time.
Yep.
But I don't think the waste station, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I don't know enough about them.
Right, and they haven't given me anything yet. They haven't even gotten me their petition. They just kind of said, they just said, they gave me a heads up that it would be coming.
Okay.
And it may not come, I don't know.
Okay. All right, sorry, I jumped around.
We did get the Gibson Center's petition with their financials.
Okay.
But it hasn't got approved by, we just got it yesterday, so it hasn't, the supervisors haven't checked it for us yet.
Okay.
So going back to that truck for a minute.
Sorry.
Whatever, whatever the value of the deal that you make on the truck, less our trade, and we could use about $50,000 from the, uh, transfer station capital improvements line. Uh, we've got $81,300 plus another $15,000 going in. So we could use $50,000 of that to help reduce that, to buy down the value of that truck.
You think they can give us that before our next meeting?
I'm hoping so. I gotta get together with David. He's been, it's been a tough, it's been a tough week for.
I understand.
And the only other thing that I've got on, actually on solid waste.
It's a new year.
The new year. It has been so slow up there. I think I've only had two contracted drops in the last two weeks. By the weather, but yet we're still ahead of, we're ahead of last year, which was a record year. Uh, not, not by a lot. We've taken so far in the first four weeks, we've taken in $3,172. Last year at this time, we had taken in $2996. Not a big increase. We're not looking to make a profit. But getting a lot of TVs. When the question comes up regarding recycling at the transfer station, two items that get forgotten all the time in the explanation, and one is return of electronics. It's considered recycling, that recycling line, and refrigeration.
It should be, you mean as a revenue?
No, not as a, as a cost.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Does that have to come?
Because if people ask, "What would you use that recycling line for?", well, those two items are.
Right, right, right. I see what you're saying. What do we pay for out of that line?
Right.
Yeah, I'll remember that.
Okay.
Uh, so the total warrant is $4,010,326, less 10, $10,000. Uh, versus last year of $3,841,070 for a 4.41% increase, which will be going to drop a little bit. If we could just find another $326, we'll be under $4 million. We'll find $326.
We can do it.
We can.
Do you want to bring a budget in under $4 million?
We can, we'll beg so.
$3,999,999.
I say that, but the topic of discussion really is Modoc Hill. We haven't had a meeting, we didn't get a chance to have a meeting about that. I think we still need to.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I don't think that $200,000 is enough.
Oh, it's, it's not gonna, it's not going to be. But it may be, I don't know how far that can get pushed down, but we do have to talk the proper quirks.
We do.
Are the plates gonna be able to get us further down the road, or, or where are we gonna be?
Yeah.
Because you know it's gonna rain again. I, I don't know what the new system is, but.
Yeah.
It's gonna rain again.
Uh, the state was on 113, uh, north of Colby Hill Road, where the deep trenches are. They were there this week, and from what I understand, they were doing a hydrological study. And that's what I heard, uh, and the ditches are full of snow, so I don't know how that worked. I'm not.
Pour a hot cup of coffee in it and see where it goes?
See where it goes.
Okay.
I don't know.
Anything else, John, on the?
Uh, I'm done with the budget.
Okay, and we already covered the conservation request for sale.
Do you guys want to back up and do anything about Modoc?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I dropped the ball the last time.
No, no, you did. Oh, yeah, when can we?
Can we schedule a meeting with DPW just specifically for that item in the near future?
We could throw a special meeting in, right?
Oh, yeah, you can. You could have a, a meeting, you know, just a meeting. It's public, but you don't need to accept public comment or anything. You just want to have a discussion.
Yeah, we need to see what our options are.
We do it Thursday? That gives you, that gives you the 24 hours, right?
Yes, it would, yeah.
Oh, wait, what do you got? I know.
You don't want to know.
You gotta, I know at some point you have to learn.
I have an interview with David Seer for the Love and the Sun article.
Oh, you're gonna do it?
Um, but I can cancel that.
Thursday, like, this Thursday, 25th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine.
What time is Thursday?
Can we do it early?
I will.
Well, what TPW guys are here?
4 o'clock in the morning, it's good.
I'm up, I'm up. I might be the only one at the meeting, but.
What time you go to work?
I'm off Thursday.
Oh.
Four, 3:30?
Oh, afternoon.
How late do those guys start? 3:30, 4:05?
Yeah.
We can do 3:30?
3:30, sorry.
3:30 Thursday?
In the morning?
No.
Yes.
I'd, I'd be here.
Yeah, not me.
We might have to, we might have to stand John up and.
Yeah, just lean me against the wall. 3:30.
3:30 Thursday.
Yeah, I can't forget myself number nine tonight.
There should be no snow Thursday.
No.
Might be a little bit tonight.
Um, inch. All right, now, request for sale map, 115044. What we got there?
Is this the one that's, uh, passed yesterday?
No Sean tonight?
No what?
Sean's not here tonight. We'll take that, obviously.
Oh, no, yeah.
Well, this, I, this, I think this letter actually came from Laura Lai.
Okay. You know, oh, I did, I did want to, I did want to ask Cordell. So why does the town have to apply for the DES permit to, for what?
I, they'll take care of it, I believe, is what it says in here, unless I read it wrong.
I think the reason is because we'll still own the land, so we are the applicant.
But they'll take care of it.
Yeah, but they'll, so they're, they're applying in our name, or the town's name, I guess, because we own it. That's why. So you would, you would agree to let them.
I mean, we're never going to do anything with that property.
I don't have a problem selling it, but, I mean, was it, I think it was Laura Lai that told us that the state is not going to deny them access to their property. So why do we have to wait, just sell it and do the thing?
Right.
Why do we need to do them?
I don't think.
Just sell it and let them deal with it?
I think that's correct. I, I don't, I never could understand why we were gonna get in the middle of that at all. We can just sell them the property and then go do your thing.
The only reason I would see to do this is that they're nervous that they're not gonna get the permits, but you made it sound like it wasn't an issue.
I mean, why would they give it to us and not give it to them? I mean, it's just for a road, so a driveway and access.
I think they'd be more apt to give it to a private property owner than a municipality who doesn't need it for anything.
So is our answer gonna be? We just need a different, we just need a different agreement, correct? We just, we're agreeing to sell it to them, and that's it.
I think they want a price.
We're gonna come up with a price.
Oh, well, that case.
This easement travels underneath the power lines?
What was it, $4,326, is that?
We'll take care of it.
Does this affect that easement? Do they have, as part of their easement, the power company? Do they have any restriction?
They do about building in that, in, under the power lines. I don't believe you can build under the power lines. You can drive under them, so that's, that would be his restriction.
Because there's some car, the bark houses, you gotta drive under them to get to the house.
Yeah, you can drive on them. You, in fact, you can put fences across them as long as they're not locked, as long as there's a gate.
Yeah.
Should be fine.
I guess the other, the other thing is too, um, that's a pretty good-sized piece of property out there.
It is.
And they say that, you know, they, oh, I'm just being the devil's advocate. If you did want to sell it to them with some sort of restriction in terms of what, they can't like subdivide it into, you know, eight lots out there. Granted, it's wet, you know, they might not be able to do it, but years from now, there's new technology that comes along and all, and you never know. That could eventually get changed into eight lots. I mean, they'd have to build a road. There's a whole lot to it.
I mean, how, how far off of Old Road is that piece of property? How long is this?
I don't have my map with me.
Is it more than 1,500 feet? Because I think there's an issue with 1,500 feet. There's gonna be a cul-de-sac in there. And I'm pretty sure the planning board doesn't allow subdivisions with cul-de-sacs longer than 1,500 feet.
I'm not, I'm, I've not known.
Well, they would have to subdivide it just to put, they want to put two dwelling units on it. And I don't know how they're going to manage that without having road frontage for both lots.
And they don't have any road frontage.
And they, they can put an accessory dwelling on it.
Right, but they were talking of, what my understanding was two full-size family homes, which they can't do with what they're getting.
They wouldn't have enough frontage.
They don't have frontage on anything.
No.
They, well, but if they merged the piece that you gave them with their piece, then they would have frontage. But it would only be as wide as.
Right. It would only be enough for one lot.
Right, exactly.
I would run this by the attorney just to make sure that we don't run into a problem.
Oh, and there's nobody here to answer questions from their side, so.
And, and no, no, not to their, I didn't tell her this was coming on tonight. I just kept moving forward with it.
I still don't know exactly why they just didn't use, they have an easement.
Well, according to this, this too much.
It's too swampy.
Yeah.
Who told you to buy the name?
I mean, I don't have a problem selling it. I would want it. I would, I would like to see it not subdivided if.
Oh, no, I don't want it subdivided at all. You want to put one house up there?
Fine.
Back yourself out.
I, I, to be honest with you, I'm okay with two, but I don't want to see a cluster of houses going. And not that I think they could with the wetlands, but.
Well, run it by Cordell.
Yeah.
Let us know what Cordell says.
Yeah, try to give him some information on the length of this, the length of the season.
Okay. Um, of the PS and H piece?
Yeah, the piece that we are gonna sell, or actually the whole piece.
I might have cleaned out your book.
Okay. Anything else you need from us? No? Adam, your list. John?
I'm done.
I'm done too. Bob? Oh, wait, administrator, she's done. Bob?
Uh, real quick, that comment, that question, John, was disgusting and was disrespectful. On behalf of, on, on, I totally agree with you. On behalf of people that have worked for you, have served with you on the Board of Selectmen, and lived in the same town as you for the last 40-plus years, thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do. You go and feel refreshed when you're ready. So it was disrespectful, and you deserve an apology for that. It's just another example of the ongoing belligerent attitude that members of the Budget Committee hand herself to see me have towards you.
That's why you have a hard time getting people to sit behind your shakers.
Yeah. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Rec Department. Okay, well, with that, um, do I, oh, wait, yes, Simtriden.
Oh, yep, we got one.
Who's, uh?
So Joe, he's our new police officer.
Oh!
You want to take a look at it? Thanks, thank you.
Part time. Yep. Yeah, part time.
Yeah, don't ever listen to Richie Young. Richie Young goes, "Oh, he's working on it." I go, "No, no, he's not."
Like I said, I've always done what's in the best behalf of this town. And I was told, and I want to.
I never go to tell him that for me.
No, she wants to set it up so they can elect who she wants. Um, that's only Simtriden, no non-public?
Yes.